All right. Well, thanks, everybody for joining us tonight. We're doing this webinar by special request. Jerry and I had, well, we've actually been doing some discussions on this throughout even in 2024. There were some things that we did related to this. Actually, back in our conference in 2024 was related to this theme. When we were out in Minneapolis last year. And actually, we'll have an announcement coming up about our 2025 conference really soon, hopefully next week. Anyway, so we did a session at the Learning Planet Festival. I think some of you presented there as well. And we had a, you know, a request just to keep this discussion going. So that's, that's how we, we came up with this and decided to do it this week. So again, thanks for everybody for being here. So really, this is an open discussion. We want to give it a little bit of frame, but then we really want to hear from all of you. And things that you're experiencing and things that you might want to share and, you know, all of that good stuff. So the frame we try to give it is that when we say the education revolution, what we mean is that the education revolution is where, you know, students would have lots of choices. And they would be the drivers of their education, right? They would be the ones making the choice. Now, that doesn't leave out parents. That doesn't mean parents don't have any say. That doesn't mean that it wouldn't be a decision with the student. But the way Arrow sees it is that the student really should be in the driver's seat. And, you know, we can, we can talk about that during this as well. But that's how we look at it as an education revolution, right? That, you know, there's, there's lots of options and students understand the options and they're making the decisions. In terms of democracy, what we say is that, you know, we talk really about this idea of a democratic process. And Jerry can talk a little bit more about, it's really based around the Iroquois Confederacy idea. And how, you know, voices represented there. So I know Jerry might want to give us a little insight to that. And then we can kind of launch into our discussion. And if you do jump in, maybe just do a quick kind of intro, just say who you are. You know, just really quick, that kind of thing. So Jerry, if you're, I know you're there. If you want to kind of jump in and explain a little bit about what I was talking about.
You're muted, Jerry.
No, how's that? All right, so, um, okay, so I think we were not very successful in getting our idea across about how the country needed democracy. Because we elected a guy who doesn't seem to get what it is. And so we have our work cut out for us to try to, to help people understand this. But theoretically, if enough kids grow up understanding what democracy is, eventually, we might have a real democratic country. You never know. It's possible.
Jerry, can you talk, I know you know a lot about the Iroquois Confederacy. Like, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So I, in the very beginning of when I was running my own school, 1968, we heard about Mohawk tribe that was having problems with a bridge on their own, you know, in their own reservation, being able to go back and forth from Canada to the United States. And we went to visit them and we developed a relationship with the Mohawks. The Mohawks are part of the Iroquois Confederacy. And there are six or seven of them that are part of a Confederacy. And this Confederacy kind of ran with equal rights for all of the members. And the interesting thing is that then became a model for what, you know, Benjamin Franklin did in kind of organizing what became the United States. So this is all very closely connected to the kind of stuff that we're working on.
Great. Thanks, Jerry. And I did forget, I, there might be some of you out there who are not familiar with Arrow. And just really quick, Arrow has been around for over 35 years. And Arrow's mission is to help make self-directed and learner-directed and learner-centered educational alternatives available and accessible to everyone. So that's Arrow's mission in a nutshell. There's a lot that happens around that, but, but we're not really here to talk about that so much as we're here to talk about kind of the theme that we put forward. So I think what we'd like to do is open it up to all of you and kind of get your thoughts, what, you know, what you're thinking. And we can just have this as an open discussion. I will say that, you know, we're bound to hear different ideas and different, different opinions on things. And what I would ask is that we just keep this as a conversation. And that is, this is, these are not like, you know, this is not personal necessarily, right? This was just discussing ideas. And do that in an open forum, again, with an open mind and an open heart. All right, so if you'd like to speak, just use the raise your hand function. And some of you may have that on the bottom of your screen. Some of you may have that on the, on either side. But go ahead and do that. And we'll call on you and you can go unmute and just kind of say what you need to say. Now, if you all raise your hand at once, I won't be able to see.
Hi.
Hey, hey, Susan.
Hey, how are you guys?
Good. How are you doing?
Good. I came in a little late, so sorry if I, if I missed anything, but I'll, I can start. And part of me was just wondering back to, gosh, when I first started this, a lot was about democracy. And I went to the conferences and everything. And I remember from years ago, thinking how interesting it was that when education started, we kind of had these two forces that looked like they were, it was the same strategy, but for different reasons. Such as to have like good little workers for the workforce. And then you had the people who wanted education for democracy. And they're kind of opposing forces. It looks like they're on the same team, but it was completely different reasons. If we kind of believe that's how, you know, schooling started and things like that. And so now I look at the vouchers and everything that's coming up now. And I think there's part of us that want education for democracy and free thought. And I, I'm not sure. It's all for democracy, but again, it looks like we're kind of all on the same page. So I've just been pondering that. And my name is Susan, by the way. And, uh, golly, I homeschooled the kids a while back. They're now in college and growing up, so. That's my two cents. Take it for what it's worth.
Awesome. Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry, Jerry.
You live where?
What was that, Jerry?
Where?
Oh, where are they? So my son is at a local state school called Rowan University. He used to be Glassboro State until Mr. Rowan gave $100 million for their mechanical engineering. And it became Rowan University and kind of put him back on the map. And Abby's at a small school called the College of Worcester in Ohio, but she's in Italy right now for the term.
And where are you?
And where am I? I'm in New Jersey. Haven't, haven't gotten very far. I grew up in New Jersey, went to college, said, that's it, I'm never coming back. And I came back. So that's where I'm now. And it's just so wonderful to see you. So. Table in the back.
Two of us Long Islanders too. We said we would never come back.
Awesome. So I think there were one or two people who just popped in. So we're just kind of, this is an open discussion. So if you'd like to add your ideas to this discussion topic, just go ahead and use the raise your hand function. And then we'll call on you and you can share some ideas. So one of the things is interesting is that way back in, oh God, 1920s, right? John Dewey was talking about, one of the things that he said, and I know, you know, there are folks who have their issues with John Dewey. And but one of the things that he said is that in order to have a democracy, right? The citizens need to deliberate well, right? It's one of the things that he said. And that's sort of some of the ideas behind his visions of education and, and that sort of thing. So it's, so it's interesting, right? That he would, that even way back then, right? Dewey was talking about that. And it's something like Jerry was talking about how, you know, one of the things we say is that, or the idea that we put forward is, you know, if you grow, grow up in a democratic process, right? And you have, you know, you're, you're valued in that democratic process. The way you participate in other process, right? The sort of the larger democratic process, let's say, right? Or even smaller ones is, is different, right? Because you're, you, you've had that experience and you're, and I'm not saying necessarily better, right? But just different, it's a different way of doing things. You know, I, a lot of you know my background and I've been, you know, worked in democratic schools and, and, you know, it was just, to me, it was wonderful to, as an adult, to just have one vote, right? My vote counted as same as everybody else, right? And their vote counted as same as mine. And, you know, when I was using air quotes, right, the principal, the only, there, there was only one, you know, instance that I can think of where I had to say, that's illegal. So we can't do that, but we can maybe think of something else. And that was the only time where, not that I even, the idea was like squashed or quashed, or whatever you want to say, right? It was more like that part we can't do because it's not legal. And that's a whole other thing. We wanted to work on making it legal, right? But we have to sort of shift a little bit from that. And how do we do that? And then that was a whole other process, right, that came in. So, um, yeah, so love to hear some more thoughts on this. You know, what do you all think? What do you, what have you been experiencing? You know, how do you, how, how, how have you experienced in, you know, your own education or your own lives? And a lot of you, you know, you run your own schools or centers. And some of you are, you know, university professors and things like that. So, ah, Carlo, go ahead.
I'm Carlo. I founded and edit the Journal of Unschooling and Alternative Learning. And I teach at a graduate program. And I'm just thinking, you know, as a young philosophy student, I remember hearing great names of, you know, all of these thinkers, you know, like Aristotle and Plato and Thomas Hobbes. But at the beginning, I didn't know what they stood for. And lo and behold, they're all against democracy, right? Like Aristotle doesn't think democracy is a good form of government. Neither did Plato, neither did Thomas Hobbes, and a whole bunch of other political philosophers. And then, you know, I, you shake your head at that. And then after your election in the U.S., you know, as Jerry mentioned, you know, this is what democracy has resulted in, right? So maybe it's important to think about, you know, why are some people suggesting that so many philosophical thinkers throughout our history are criticizing the notion of democracy? And then, you know, when you think about democracy as it played out in the last, you know, election, how can we sort of rethink and reclaim democracy in a way that, you know, these types of outcomes will not be something that will move forward in the way that it's moving forward in so many different places? Because in the name of democracy, some people are doing some pretty undemocratic things in my mind. But so just to throw that out there, that, you know, that there are some well-respected philosophers throughout history that were not fans of democracy. And what can we learn about democracy in thinking about what they were suggesting?
Yeah, we're, the United States is hardly a democracy, but Deb has her hand up.
Well, thanks. Thanks, Jerry. Yeah, I guess I can kind of follow on both of you guys a bit. Like democracy, like basically, what is not chatted up in this culture is the way that human beings have actually thrived and grown to, to be eight billion in population. And that's through cooperation, through cooperation and mutual aid. And, and that's, that's a fundamental aspect of what, what all of our schools are about. And it will never go away completely. And any of these guys, like, like whenever I read all those great men, Carlo, like, they never impressed me much, you know, they, they didn't, I couldn't, they didn't hit my heart, they didn't inspire me. And getting back to what Jerry said and what I just said, like, it's just so, democracy is so fundamental. And we're cooperating with our fellow human beings is so fundamental. And yes, conflict is endemic to it. And I've been facing this a lot in housing. I've had to shift from like a number of education activists. I've had to shift out of necessity from education into working in housing because people are freezing today. But it's a, when you get people together in a room, you find, like you find, it's very difficult for them to discuss and make decisions because they don't have the skills. And we, we have all been under pressure. Things were actually getting quite democratic, getting more and more democratic, especially after the horror of the Holocaust and the fear of the atomic bomb. Like I, certainly during the 60s and 70s, there was, there was a real drive, you know, when, when many of our schools are founded, there's a real drive to, to live democratic values and, and to deal with the horrific racism and, and the environmental devastation in our, in our cultures and economies. And that was deliberately undermined and squashed. And in the 80s, it really got going. And our, the people we work with now and live with now and whose kids we try to take care of, many of them have serious mental health issues because they're overworked and they're stressed. Because even middle-class people could be homeless in a couple of months. So it's, we're dealing, democracy is, is always going to rise again. And I think, just in conclusion, I'm taking up a lot of airtime here, but, but, I mean, what, what you guys are going through is devastating and it's worldwide. And, and technology just magnifies the, the, the power of anyone who already has power. But anyone who works with children knows that to, to help, help kids through any part of their lives is doing something worth doing. Even though our movements have not caught fire, have not the way we expected them to or wanted them to, or, and something else is taking over and we're going to have to deal with it. And our kids are going to have to deal with it. But, but what we do does really matter to every kid and every family we try to work with.
Thanks, Deb. So Jerry, you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, so, uh, at, at, at my school, I think we started out democratically and then we evolved into something a little different, which is interesting. And I wonder how many people did this. So that when we, for example, have a meeting, when we had a meeting, we would vote on something and then the minority would be polled to find out why they voted against it. And then anybody could ask for a revote, which would be with discussion. So it was closer to consensus. It was not consensus. I don't particularly like consensus anyway, because I find, I have found that it can be very manipulated. But it wasn't actually, as they say, a dictatorship of the majority, you see. It was something different. Now, I'm not even sure what you would exactly call that. But I think a lot of us got to that point. I don't know what some people think.
Well, since I have my hand up for other things, I'll comment on what I've done. And it's, it was basically a process like you're talking about is like, you know, with the vote. So you had like the, it's, it's called a lot of different things. But in, in one instance that I'm thinking of, it was called fist of five. And so you voted and if you put it up a five, that means I love this idea. I want to help make it happen. And here we go, right? A four was like, very much behind an idea. I don't know if I can help, but, you know, ask me and I might be able to. Three was like, yep, I'm with it, not going to help it happen, but I'm with it. Two is like, I have questions. One was like, hmm, I really am not okay with this. And a fist was like, I'm going to block this because this is either, you know, it's either going to hurt somebody or it's illegal or it's whatever. And so anytime that somebody put up a fist to, to two, right? You always, like you said, you always did a revote, you always had a discussion about, okay, what, do you need more information? Do you need, you know, it, you know, why did you put up a one or a two or a fist? You know, let's talk about that. And then it was a revote. And then the idea was if people still had, if there was still a number of, you know, ones and twos, sometimes the idea got passed, but you still represented those ideas. Really, what, really the idea was that you really wanted everybody to three or above. Like, not that, hey, I don't necessarily love the idea, but I'm, I'm going to go along because, you know, it's not a big issue for me. And, you know, I don't care what color we paint the wall, you know, like, like that kind of thing. And then there were bigger things. But I wanted to, sorry, go ahead.
Who was this?
This was at the New School in Maine, that, that, that process. And then there were others similar to that. And I agree. And then there were some where it was just like majority and that, that didn't sit too well with me. So I want to make a couple of comments. So one is probably what we should, we should have named this was, you know, why is the education revolution crucial to democratic process and democracy, right? Because I think what we're talking about is the, the process that we're talking about is a democratic process, right? Democracy, as we're saying this big, you know, maybe we have big D and little d, I don't know. But democracy, and I've, I've said this a lot and I'm sure all of you have maybe thought about this, is that a lot of democracies are shams, right? They're not real democracies. They say that they're representative and they're not really. And, you know, there's other things that are represented besides, you know, what's good for the collective? What's good for people? And so I wanted to point that out. And I think we, we had this discussion, like I said, in 2024. And there was a gentleman, I can't remember his name. And we started talking about how a lot of democracies are failing, right, around the world. And it's kind of to Carlo's point and Deb's point and Jerry's point, why is that happening, right? Like what, what's going on with democracies, right? In terms of the government of democracy, right? This idea of that, why is it failing, you know, what's happening? And so in a way, you could say democracy as that, right? That idea has failed, right? In, in a lot of ways, right? But I think, again, we're talking more a little bit about the process of democracy. And, you know, how do you get there? And being able to make decisions together and sit in a room with people that you don't agree with, maybe, right? And, and have that, you know, and be able to come to some sort of place where you can move forward, right? And you can, you can represent people's needs. Rather than I'm here to just represent my idea and my belief, you know, how do we, how do we make this work for, for everyone? The other thing is, you know, we did have an election here in the United States and people voted. And, you know, maybe there is, there was a lot of us here or some of us here who don't like the result. You know, but what do you, I, I always say like, and, and, you know, when it goes my way, let's say the election goes my way. And, and it was interesting, we had local elections a couple of years ago. And, and, you know, I remember talking to some folks and I'm like, well, this time, you know, went my way this time, right? And but, um, you know, but in a democracy, you don't always, you don't always get the person you want, right? But the idea is in a democratic process, you should have a way to be represented, right? Your opposition or your concern should be represented. And I think that's maybe more what we're talking about. I'm not sure. I'm just, I'm just like, I'm sort of spitballing here because a lot of what you're saying is making me think of this. So I'd love to hear what others have to say and, and whatever else you have to say. Please go ahead and raise your hand and we will call on you.
Again, Megan.
Yes, so I'm Megan. I live south of Buffalo, New York. I follow Jerry and Peter. It's great. I love that you guys are doing this. I love that this is happening. I've really enjoyed just Jerry and Peter over the last, I don't know, probably 15 years or so. I grew up in Alaska. I was homeschooled from fifth grade until I found Grace Llewellyn's book, The Teenage Liberation Handbook, where I became straight up unschooling. And so when I went to university, I hadn't been in a classroom for eight years. So pretty much my entire adult life has been grappling with unschooling, homeschooling. How is the world supposed to work that I want it to work that it absolutely does not work? Which is a big reason why I've loved what Arrow has done over the years. Because I think there's not a lot of dialogue that goes on about how do we, what kind of world do we want to live in? And how does the education not match that, just in basic principles? So now I have a nine-year-old. I'm in New York State. Homeschooling is our only option in New York State. So I'm, as a parent now, I'm in the other side of it. And I also, you know, even just growing up in Alaska and being in Western New York, that's been a big pivot to me. You know, I grew up understanding from the way I was raised was, you know, if you want to work with other people, you've got to have something that you're all in it struggling for, right? Like Alaska is a place that by definition, you have to cooperate with your neighbors. Because if you don't, you could be the one left out in the cold, right? There's a very real natural effect that if you don't get along with your neighbors, you better be pretty clear about it. Because you need people to be looking out for your mutual survival, right? It's not about thriving any, it's like literally, if you don't have enough firewood, you could freeze. Your kids couldn't get what they need. It can be a very much a life or death situation. So being in, you know, on the East Coast and then in New York, what's really struck me is the cultural technological transformation we've been through, you know, and even just three generations, right? And Ken Robinson spoke about this in Portland at the Arrow Conference, which is in three generations, we don't have that similarity. We don't have a shared interest or shared value because we don't grow up around the corner from the people that we marry, that we raise our families with. And then you add technology to it. And what I find in the East Coast, and I think this is probably true pretty much anywhere with internet, is that we're so disassociated from a very life and death cooperation, right? Like we can literally sit behind a computer screen and pontificate and bully and all of the things, right? And especially what's most concerning to me is the media, right? I come from a very conservative family. I actually consider myself more libertarian. I'm not super thrilled about Trump, but I have so much more respect for him now than I did the first round because of my view on the world. So it's been super disorienting to me to be in a lot of spaces where it gets, I'm pretty much the lone duck in terms of my perspective in the political bit of it. But in terms of democracy, like a republic is the idea, and this is not about party politics. This is about just the basic concept. I grew up thinking of a republic as you're still, you have a shared set of values. You have a shared set of principles that everybody's on the same page with. And you can, you know, you, you want consensus and you want people to, to support that. But you're all bounded by an agreed set of boundaries, you know? And we're going through the 10 commandments now, right? Like this is ancient scriptural religious or whatever you, but it was literally, this is the code of conduct. These are the basic 10 principles that if you're going to get along with each other and you're going to have a good community, these are the things you need to abide by. You shouldn't be stealing, you shouldn't be killing, you shouldn't be coveting someone else's property. So what I look at is we're in this point in time, I think, you know, like we don't have a shared value system. It's not even religion. Every institution you look at is falling apart. It's, it's imploding. And I think as individuals and as a community, we are outgrowing the institutions. We're outgrowing the medical situation, the education, religion, all of it. We are in this crossroads of development as human beings that I don't know that we've ever really been in before. And so to be guided by a sense of shared values that's not about the religious rule, right? Like it's not, I grew up Catholic. The Pope could say whatever he wants to say. It has no bearing on how I'm going to live my life. Which is very different from, I think, my grandparents where the religious leader is the one that finally dictated your choices. So in terms of education, I think there's just such a wide crossroads. And I'm loving that the conversation is happening. Because if we don't have shared values and a shared sense of what makes the world go around and what we want to honor, I don't know how we could possibly come to any kind of agreement about what it needs to come out to. And the media, I think, has been a huge tool and technology. Because again, we're never at the front lines. We can speculate and project and we make all of and we make all of the sense of whatever we see in the headline based on whoever's producing that headline and whatever bias and spin that they apply to it. But we almost without exception have no firsthand evidence to actually correlate what it is that we see and what we're afraid of with what's actually happening in the world. I have all kinds of opinions about Trump and Elon Musk, and I go to my social media field and I found all these people that have very, very different opinions, but ultimately, we don't really know, right? Like, how do we engage with other people in a way that we still feel like that mutual shared values, that we're all human beings, we're all on the same team to get together? Because one last thing is, we're also, you know, looking a lot at like when the English came to the US to settle and colonize. And you had people that would show up on a ship and they wouldn't be able to feed themselves, because they were relying on the Indians to bring them food. And they would really struggle, like, who's supposed to grow the food? Who's supposed to build the house? They would try to get through winters and they would end up dying and killing each other off, because they couldn't coexist together. So there's that aspect of leadership, right? Like, we need solid, strong leadership, especially when a lot of us are acting like heathens or civilian, you know, how do you, what's the code of conduct and how, what, what does everyone agree to is the proper behavior and what's acceptable and what isn't? And I think, you know, in a dialogue in a democratic environment with high school students is one thing. But a lot of us, even as grown adults, we're still acting like teenagers, we're still acting like six and seven year olds. We still feel entitled that everything should go our way. And we don't necessarily even know how to relate to each other in a way that I think is human and and just recognizes like we can think of things differently, but we also have a responsibility to create what we want. And if we don't have people that we want to create what we want with, then we need to start from scratch, basically, so.
Thanks, Megan. Um, it makes me think of the social contract. I hate the things that you just said. Um, I know, I see, right? Carlo, you have your hand up, so go ahead.
Okay, Megan, a question first. Megan, what did you mean by it was our only choice homeschooling?
So we don't vax and that, I mean, if you just want to get to basic freedom, New York State mandates you are required to use absolutely every single vaccination from all of it in order to even enroll in a school. So homeschooling, unless I'm going to comply with that, which I'm not, homeschooling is literally the only option in New York State. I think California, there's maybe a couple of other states, and that's a whole other conversation too. But again, that to me is very indicative of the way the medical institution has been the abuse of power. And it's the same thing with education, same thing with the religion. There's an abuse of the authority.
Okay, thanks. Carlo.
Well, what what helps me is John Rawls really uh, around all this, and he has a brilliant thought experiment. Where he just says, uh, he has something called the veil of ignorance. So how do you know if we're on the right track or we're making right decisions or we're going in the right way? Um, the idea is everybody comes together and you you're in a veil of ignorance. So you don't know if you're gonna be black or white or anything else, or rich or poor. Um, and, uh, you know, straight, gay, LGBTQ plus, whatever the situation might be, able, disabled. And so, um, if you don't know that, because if you're wealthy, you're probably thinking you're gonna make decisions, you're gonna say, well, I want tax cuts. Um, but if if you don't know what you're gonna be, uh, you're in a veil of ignorance, then, you know, you'd probably want a social system that might be able to protect you, because you don't know if you're gonna be rich or poor, or whatever other category you're gonna be in. And so I think understanding that type of, uh, you know, political worldview is, I think, you know, John Rawls, simple, brilliant thought experiment helps put things in perspective for me, anyway.
Thanks, Carlo. Um, I know there's some others out there that we haven't heard from yet. Um, and we'd really love to hear from everyone tonight. Um, if if we have a um, a chance to do that. If you're, if you prefer not to unmute yourself, you could always uh, share your thoughts in the chat box, um, because it, um, you know, everybody can see, um, your ideas and thoughts in the chat as well. Um, so if you, if you prefer to do that, uh, please feel free to go ahead and do that.
Robert. Or Roger. Roger.
Go ahead, Roger.
Thanks, Eric. Um, thanks, Pierre. Uh, hey, great to, great to see, um, some familiar faces, um, from, um, the conference and from from previous things. And, uh, appreciate, appreciate all the thoughtful contributions so far. I guess what's top of my mind, just thinking about people getting getting along and what does it mean to to, you know, be together in a democracy? And I've been thinking about kind of moral commitments today and, um, I spent, uh, I spent a a good chunk of time out of the country and and a good part of that was, uh, working on, um, uh, international humanitarian programs, um, funded by the American people through USAID and, uh, you know, seeing all of that wiped away, uh, in, you know, literally a week.
You you just got muted somehow.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, you were unmuted. I sent you a little thing to say unmute yourself, but go ahead.
Um, so, yeah, so I was just saying that, um, I've I've been thinking about, uh, commitments and and, um, moral commitments and and, um, so I'm not sure where I got cut off, but, uh, you know, I spent a lot of time out of the country and I was working on humanitarian programs. Um, I wasn't directly working for USAID, but I was working on programs funded by USAID, which which is basically, you know, the 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 materials, the things that are given out, that, you know, this is provided by the American people. Um, so I I think the the commitment of this country to, um, people with less uh, and literally people on the edge of starvation or dealing with very difficult medical situations, um, health situations and ep- and epidemics around the world for many decades has been, uh, uh, admirable and and to, you know, walk away from that overnight, uh, has seemed like a, uh, immoral act to me. Uh, it's just like, I can understand the need for reform. I I think, I think that's very valid to talk about. Well, let's, let's review and talk about like, why do we, why do we care about people around the world? Like, what what's what's in it for us and why do we do it? Is it, is it altruistic? Is it humanity, common humanity? Um, and does it also support US national interests? Like, that's a great conversation to have, and it should be had, but to to, um, to to abruptly um, and, you know, work that's taken, you know, many decades to create these programs and and make them efficient and make them accountable. Um, it seems, uh, it doesn't seem like the way you treat others, um, in a society. And, uh, so it it feels like, uh, an application of of ethics, uh, in that, in that sense. And, uh, uh, yeah, so that's, that's on my mind, just because I personally know people whose lives are being upended by, um, whether they're in this country or out of this country, um, by by recent actions. And, uh, you know, I I respect the need to shake things up, and that's what people voted for. So I think, you know, that in some senses, democracy worked, people are getting what they wanted, but the the, um, uh, the the casualties, um, the collateral damage happening right now, um, seems to be, uh, uh, I think excessive, but also I think it's intended. Uh, it it feels like it's intentional, so. Um, so I'm not sure what to make of it, uh, but I know, uh, I I'm working each week to connect young children with nature, and that feels really good every week to have them be outside and not on devices and uh, I I definitely want to do more of that work, and I'm very excited to learn more about, um, how I can contribute to, uh, educational alternative models uh, going forward, so. Stop there.
Uh, so. No, it's great. Thanks, Roger. And, um, love to hear from some other folks. And I think that that just makes me think of more of, again, you know, this idea of democratic process, right? And this idea of this education revolution that we're talking about. You know, and and I think from early on, right, being able to have that choice, right, to to be able to understand your options, to be able to to be brought into it in a very different way. Um, and I I live in New Hampshire, I think a lot of you know, um, that I live here in New Hampshire, and I think New Hampshire in a lot of ways, right, has a lot of great things going on, education, uh, you know, education wise. And a lot of discussions that I've been in and what what I feel lax is that it, there's a lot of talk about parental rights. Parental rights are important. I even wrote a Substack post on this. Um, they're super important. I mean, and and I don't think anybody here would would deny that or say that they're not important. Um, but that's all, that that becomes the main focus. And anytime I'm in the room, and there's others as well, I'm not the only one who bring, well, what about, you know, what about the actual, and I hate to use this word, because it sounds, what about the consumer of the product, right? Because it's really like when it, right, it's usually students, right, kids, minors, whatever you want to say, that are going to these schools, whether it's self-directed, whether it's a public school, whether it's whatever. Doesn't really matter, right? They're the ones that are consuming the product, so to speak. And so what about them? You know, what about, how come they, it's like, basically, uh, my my analogy is you go to a restaurant, right, and you say, I want fish, and they bring you chicken, right? And you don't really have a say, you're just, they just put a menu in front of you, right? And they just give you whatever you, whatever they want to bring you, they bring you. Now, that could be fun and right, and a whole other really, um, different way, right? But the the analogy is, to me, is like, well, you're basically, you have no say in the thing that's happening to you every single day, right? You do, you're not, you're not brought into it in 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 any way. You're not, you you're not trusted. Um, and and so to me, that, even that just beginning in that way, without even a democratic process, so to speak, even though I I feel like that is somewhat reflective of the democratic process, but, um, but even that, right, even at that level, just starting there to recognize, yes, of course, parents have rights. And yeah, sometimes as an adult, you're gonna see things that that a child won't see, and you you may have to say, well, hey, you know, that that school is three hours away. We may not be able to get there every day, you know, that kind of stuff. Okay, that's understandable. However, right, to not even have that level of conversation, I think, is a big disservice. And I think then we end up with, you know, a lot of disengaged students. And so I think even at that level, right, we're talking about that almost being a process where we almost have to start there. And and I see that's happening more, right? But, um, I don't know, I just feel like that's something that I think education was, and then we talked about this democratic process, which can can so easily happen, right? And all of these, right, it can, it can really easily happen. Um, thanks, Roger. So anyone else that would like to jump in, would love to hear from everybody. Again, if you, if you feel like you just want to share your thoughts in chat, please go ahead and do that. I'm looking for hands here. All right. Um, so question for everybody, so.
As for hand up again.
I'm sorry, I can't see. Go ahead.
You know.
Is that me?
Oh, Deb, sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this will be short, because I I I went on and on, but I I just, uh, in terms of, uh, of 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 shared values, I think, I think that's, um, um, uh, reacting to 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 Peter's point. Um, in in my many years at Alpha School, I have found that children have an incredibly strong set of shared values. That that they're very, very, have very strong ideas about how they want to be treated. And much of our work with them is about, um, helping them to, and and also they want to be together, like there are extroverts and introverts, but no one wants to be excluded and and the in, the more introverted children may need a little more distance and, but they still do want to be accepted as part of the group, and they want to be with people a good part of the time. So they want to be together and they want to be well-treated. And that is sort of the foundation of the whole democratic curriculum. And it's, uh, meetings is just the tiniest aspect, where you're just talking about some decisions you have to make in common. But it is about each person, you ask any child, um, almost any child, um, that what they value most, what they need most, they want, they need and want their liberty and their ability to explore and learn, and they want to be treated kindly and be able to be with others. And that is, you know, that is fundamental across all cultures. And as Wade Davis, Wade Davis is this terrific anthropologist philosopher, um, to to be in touch with. He has, he has visited indigenous cultures all over the world, and he talks about their, with every, all the, each eight of eight thousand human languages is a different way of being human. But this need to be together and this need to be well-treated and this way of working it out so that I realize I must change my behavior to ensure that you are well-treated. Um, so that we can continue to be together. This is fundamental to human beings, and we are being falsely divided. And yet, there's such diversity in how you do that and how you can do that.
Thanks, Deb. Um, I just want to, uh, quick comment about that. So I think, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, freedoms, right? And, you know, what what does freedom mean? And and like you said, you know, being liberated. And it's interesting, and I know, um, you know, I've had discussions with, you know, students and and adults. And basically, ideas, you know, your freedom ends where someone else begins, right? Because it's like this idea of, well, yeah, I might have, like, and and it's also contextual. So, you know, if I'm walking into a library, right, and the idea that the social contract in a library is that people are, you know, as quiet as they can be, let's put it that way, right? Because people are studying and whatever. Um, so just because I feel like that I might want to talk and I might want to be loud and whatever, right? That's, yeah, that's my freedom in a sense that, you know, I should be able to do that, right? But but not really, right? Because I'm now in a different context, and I have to understand that, you know, I think, you know, freedoms and my liberty is also contextual, right? Where I'm at home, I, you know, if I'm home by myself, I can do basically whatever I want, right? As long as I'm not impinging on someone else's freedoms or rights, right? I can, I can do that. If I'm out in a public square, right, that's a whole different thing. And, um, so it's really interesting. I think that's and the, uh, I don't know, Megan was talking a lot about that, about, you know, these shared values and this idea of, you know, what do, what do we all really see and and want? And to me, I always go back to the basic needs, right? Um, I see other hands, so I want to get to, uh, let's see, uh, Carlo, go ahead.
Just, um, I don't know if people think this might be useful, but what would the democratic process look like? And how would it help if you have a group that's for vaccines and a group that's against vaccines? So how would democracy help to? And what would that look like? I don't know if that would be an interesting thing or a worthwhile thing to pursue, just to think about what other people would think, how democracy could help negotiate.
I have many thoughts, but I don't want to jump to the, jump to.
Uh, go ahead, Megan, because I don't see any other hands up, so go ahead.
Would be just everyone's choice, I would think. What what would be the problem?
I think often, you know, there are people that feel that they're not safe if people around them aren't vaccinated, which, again, I think there's a lot of differing opinions on what real safety is. But for me, like, I feel like, yeah, it should be an option. If you feel more safe, then by all means. But it's, of course, you have to allow for other people to not be that. So to even just self-sort, you know, it almost becomes apartheid situation where those that don't want to vax, they stick to themselves, and those that do, they stick to themselves, and the two just don't overlap. That's one option.
Well, if you're vaccinated, you don't mind being with people who aren't, I would think.
Well, that was my thought, but COVID's actually taught me much different. Yeah, because if people believe that vaccines are what's going to make them safe, then they need that to be in place in order to feel safe.
Yeah, it it has to do with the fact that vaccinate vaccinations aren't actually that effective, the efficacy issue. So they want the herd immunity, so it's that, um, it's it's that. So, yes, so they, the ones that are vaccinated do not feel safe around unvaccinated people.
And there's also a lot to be said for unvaccinated people don't want to be around vaccinated people, especially in our.
Absolutely, because some of them shed live viruses and infect everybody.
And it's actually a great just thought object, because it is the core of the conflicts that we're in, because you have to believe in the efficacy and the safety Because you have to believe in the efficacy and the safety in order to be able to buy into everything that goes along with it. So to be in a state like New York where they're like, nope, sorry. This is what we're doing because we get all of our farm money. This is how it has to go. And you all have to get in line with this based on public funding, right? There's, there's no school voucher program in New York State. We have to pay for it regardless of whether we participate. And a lot of people are very okay with just not messing with the funding. Personally, I feel like, why should I have to pay to support a system that I don't believe is good for children in almost any way, shape or form, particularly with the mandates that we now have in New York State.
So, um, Mila, I saw your comment in the chat. I don't know if you'd like to unmute and talk a little bit about that if you, if you're able to. If not, that's okay. All right, um, so while we're waiting, um, so I would say too, right? So the, the, I, I think, and to Carlos' point and, you know, to think about, so how do, how do you sort this, these ideas? Because I think that, I think there was, you know, we're talking about COVID, right? So I mean, I think the, the thing here is that there was a lot of unknowns, right? Because this was something that was very, very different. So what do you do with that? You know, do you go to the safest, the safest, I'm using air quotes, right? What the thought was at the time to be the safest and you do that as a default setting? So then you're like, well, maybe this is overkill, but it's better than underreacting? Or do you then say, look, we don't really know, right? We don't really know what's going on, right? So what, so, you know, we're being honest with you, right? We don't really know what's happening. So we think this is going to work. We're not sure. Um, and I, I, I think it wasn't, uh, presented that way though. It wa, it was not presented that way. And I understand, right? Because I think there, there were people who, you know, scientists and people who felt pretty confident in what they were saying. Um, I don't want to get into all the dark stuff, like, you know, the influences and the money and all of that, because I think we all know that. And, but I'm talking about people who weren't in that sphere, right? There were people outside of that sphere that were like confident about, well, this is going to work. And then there were people who were also outside that sphere that were confident, well, yeah, like it'll work to a small degree, right? It's going to have a, a minimal effect and that's okay. There's not anything wrong with that, but now you're asking people to, you know, possibly risk something because they're, because whatever, right? And then so I think the conversation was not presented well in the beginning. So I, you know, trying to, trying to answer Carlos' question, and I don't know if this is really an answer, but I think you also have to present things in a certain way. Otherwise, I think the process that comes from that is, is, I wouldn't say flawed, but not comprehensive, right? Because you're being presented things like, I, I'm sure all of us, right? As we've been in these positions where, you know, sometimes we had sensitive topics to talk about with students and you know, I know I've had this dilemma, how much do I share, right? Do I tell them everything that I know? Do I not? You know, and, and a lot of times I, I have to tell them at least the little that I know, right? I'm not saying I know everything, but the little bit that I know I have to share because they need the information in order to make a decision. And so how do you do that without having good information? Or at least honest information, right? Say, I don't really know, man. You know, like, I, I don't, I don't know. And this is what we think, but I don't know. Jerry, I think you have your hand up, right?
Oh, no.
Okay. All right. All right, um, there we go. I know we have, I saw a hand. Roger, go ahead.
Uh, thanks Peter. Uh, yeah, I went to just on, on this, what's coming up for me as I listen is what's so fundamental to a working, to our working democracy is, um, trust. You know, so I really, really want to emphasize that word in the sense of trust in institutions. And the institutions of this country, whether it's uh, Congress or our voting system or our, you know, judicial system, the, the rule of law as like the bedrock institution, but including, you know, in a highly technological world that we live in, public health experts, like the public health, you know, infrastructure of, of this country, of any country is essential to, um, to modern health. I think many would argue. Um, because of, uh, of how globally connected we are now. And unfortunately, our, our public health system has been, uh, I think essentially ignored and underfunded for many decades is my understanding. Uh, and, but, but what's, I think what's most, um, damaging and, and, uh, worrisome about the trends, uh, in recent times has been the, uh, decreasing, uh, or, or lack of trust in institutions. And that's my, my sense from everything I've um, uh, seen, witnessed, um, learned about, um, is that, you know, much of that undermining of trust in institutions has been intentional and it's been done for uh, political gain, um, or a personal ego, um, by individuals. And, and that, that is, that is a force that, um, is undermining, um, you know, and, and basically the, without the trust in institutions, if people don't trust the rule of law or don't trust the electoral system, basically everything else will, will fall apart eventually. And, and that's, you know, that's what I think uh, needs to be recognized. And I don't know, unfortunately, if our civics education is good enough to, um, have everyone realize that on a wide scale, but that's what I see as, as, uh, most concerning and, and, um, happening right now.
So I, um, have my hand up, so I'll respond to that. And I just want to quick time check. We're about eight fifty-nine here on the East Coast. And I know we scheduled this for an hour, so I just want to be mindful of everybody's time. We can certainly keep the conversation going uh, for a little bit longer, but just want to, uh, let everybody know we are being mindful of your time. Um, so I, I'd say two things. I think Roger, that's a great point, right? The trust in institutions. And so I think this is in a, almost in, in some ways, right? The reason why Arrow even exists is because there's not trust in the public education system. There used to be, right? And I think maybe, maybe there shouldn't have been, right? If you look at sort of the origins of public education and what it was designed to do. Um, but, but since we were talking about health and healthcare, you know, part of that is, you know, there, there's been some really bad players, right, in these institutions. And they weren't rooted out and they were protected. And I'll just, I'll give you one example, like the opioid epidemic, right? There were pharmaceutical reps and doctors that were, that were, that made lots of money knowing that these things were really, really harmful, knowing that people were getting addicted. And so when those things come out, right? And then there's been other things like that, right? Um, you know, there's been a lot of, you know, I mean, I'm sure all of us can come up with probably twelve examples right now in a minute. You know, of, of not just those things, but other things like that. And I think that starts to erode, right? The trust. Um, Tom Nichols wrote, wrote a book, uh, The Death of Expertise. Um, if all of you are interested, I think it's a, it's a pretty cool and important read. And he talks about things like that, when experts, right, I'm giving quotes, air quotes, experts get things wrong and they get it really wrong. Right? And then when people see that, they're like, well, you know, first, right, butter was bad for you. Now butter's great for you, right? Now like, so it's like, and I understand, right? Things evolve with the times and there's better information. But when experts get things wrong, it's, so, so that undermines trust. And then also when you have players in some of these industries that don't get prosecuted or, you know, the law, or, or they're protected in some way, or there's some loophole, that erodes trust as well. So I think, you know, we have to also understand why trust is eroding, not just that, you know, trust is eroding, but why is that happening? I see a couple of hands here. So I don't know who was first, but I see Jerry. So go ahead.
Okay. So, um, so Roger, your organization was one of the ones that was attacked, uh, because you do good and you care about people. Seems that's the commonality of the things that our president is attacking these days. And so I have kind of been following what people suggested in terms of trusting not so much the institutions, but our society. And so far I've seen reactions to almost all these things. Today's newspaper was almost entirely full of people reacting to some of the things that the president was attacking and defending them and, and kind of responding. And I keep on hoping, well, that's going to build up to the point where people are gonna, gonna not put up with it anymore. But I just don't know. I mean, it's one of the things that I, that I hope. And that I think it is true that we have, people have lost trust in the system. I'm dealing with public school system. That is, I'm dealing with a kid right now who, whose father went to my school and he sent the kid to see me and spend some time. He's decided he wants to homeschool, but his mother won't let him. And they're in a shared situation and now he's being forced to go to school. And I don't know what the upshot is. This is just happening over the last few days. And so there's not much I can do about it. I suggested a few things to his father. Um, but it's sad. The kid has no rights in this kind of situation, no rights at all. And, you know, I'm not sure what anyone can do.
Well, that's a, that's a big one, Jerry. You know, but, but I, I think, again, you know, when we talk about institutions and things that like, so I, I see in the chat, there's a conversation between, you know, that pharmaceuticals or sort of in the private sector. Yes and no, right? Yes and no. I mean, yes, they're in the private sector, but when you go to a doctor's office, right? You go and you're expecting, right, that this person is going to be objective, right? And is going to either prescribe or not prescribe something to you based on what they think is best for you. Not incentives, right? Not incentives to push this drug. And there is actually a documentary on this. I think it's on Netflix. I can't remember the name of it. Um, for the life of me, some of you might remember, might, something like, I think Peter Berg was the director, actually. You know, the, the director of Peter Berg, um, and it has pain in the title, but I can't remember. Anyway, right? And, and now that's not to say everything in there is completely true, right? But, but I can tell you, I may have a friend of mine, right, who, you know, un- unfortunately became addicted to heroin because when he, well, one, he had a, he was a mechanic, a car kind of, um, I won't say landed on him, but, uh, was, uh, let down on him and he is, is one of his lungs collapsed, so they put him on OxyContin. Um, then he sort of was, you know, struggling with that, kind of was getting to the other point. Unfortunately broke his jaw. They gave him OxyContin again, right? So here's somebody who's struggling and now you have, right? Then so, um, again, there's many, many examples like this. And so is medicine the private sector? I guess, right? Because we pay health insurance and whatever. Um, I don't know, you know, but, but what I'm saying is you're, if you can't trust that institution, that they're not, they don't have these incentives behind them, right? That to me is, you know, it, it's no wonder, right? Trust is eroded, right? And I, and I think there, there's, there's an important point there. And yes, I agree, we have to get back to the point where we can trust those things. But I don't know, it's not a surprise to me, I guess, that those types of things. Now, we're talking about elections and things like that. That's a little bit different, right? Talking about government. Um, although government doesn't always get it right either, right? So, um, all right. So I see, uh, Deb. Um, and then we're probably going to start to wrap this conversation up. Now, that being said, doesn't mean that we're not going to have this conversation again. We will if there's a lot of interest. Um, I think all of you have our emails, so please just let us know if you want us to continue this. Um, and we're happy to do so. Uh, actually, before we call on Deb, um, I think Ken is still out there. Ken is actually doing a webinar next week for us. Um, he's going to talk a little bit about, uh, self-directed, sorry, self-directed education. Um, the state of it, where things are and, um, uh, and I'm sure he'll talk about a lot of other good stuff. All right, Deb, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, we don't have time to get a response to this, but it's just so remarkable how, uh, um, um, expertise is, is, is so little respected now. And yet the, the, the public education systems are able to enforce a curriculum that is rigid, day to day, it comes from we know not whom. And yet children from the ages of four and up are expected to conform to a series of, of, of rigid expectations that came from somebody. So I, it's just a very, very strange contradiction.
Yes. Um, and, and again, I think that, I think in a way, right, I see, to me, there's a lot of positives. I think people are recognizing that now. And I, and we're seeing a lot of, um, you know, alternatives that are, that are, uh, popping up. Now, there, again, you know, I think a lot of us here would say, well, what are those alternatives like? Uh, I know, and I, and, and I've mentioned this before. And I'm sorry for those of you who've heard me say this a hundred times, but, you know, I would say in the last three years, um, and this is the only time Arrow has ever done this, where we had to say to somebody, we don't think we can work with you right now, right? Right now, as what you're proposing for your alternative. Um, it's not necessarily what, you know, we do, um, but we, we're not cutting you off from a conversation. We're, we're actually still connected with these people. But it just was not what they were proposing was even more oppressive, right? And that's not, we just, um, that's not something we get behind, right? Uh, I think everybody knows Arrow is inclusive, you know, but really, and, and going back to Megan's point about shared values, it's that value of, do you trust kids to make decisions about, you know, their own path and their own learning? And that's really the crux of it in a way, right? That's, that's really where it comes from. And so there's a lot of offshoots of that. There's a lot of people who do wonderful things with that idea. Um, but if you're sort of against that idea, and if you don't think that's good and you think that, you know, kids should really just be little automatons and you should just tell them what to do all the time, otherwise they won't figure it out. You know, that's, Arrow, Arrow really can't get behind that, right? But, but we want, we stay in touch, right, with these people because, like, let's continue this conversation. Let us, you know, um, and they haven't, they, well, it was supposed to happen, but then there was, anyway, I'm sorry, going down a little rabbit hole, but the idea is, you know, like we're talking about, you know, this eroding of trust. And so why is that happening? And so again, you know, should we, can we demand that those things are, you know, working from a shared set of values? Um, all right. So I don't see any other hands up at the moment. Let me just take a quick check here. Um, all right. So we are about 10 minutes after nine PM here on the East Coast. Uh, so I think this is a really good stopping point, um, to say goodbye just for tonight. Uh, again, uh, please let us know, give us some feedback on this. Um, I think you, both of you, everybody has our emails, but just in case, um, going to put those in the chat right now. Just give me a moment.
People can say right now if they would like to just schedule another one. I think, you know, it seems like there's interest, yeah.
Well, I was gonna, yeah, we could do that and maybe give people a little time to think about it or whatever. Um, thank you, Megan, and thanks for everybody, uh, for being here. Um, again, let us know either in the chat or via email. Um, and I'll let this leak a little bit that we are going to be on the East Coast for the Arrow Conference. Um, and for some of you, it'd be really close. Um, so we hope to see you there and it'll be in June and we'll, we'll, we're going to announce that though full. But since you were here, we gave you a little tease, all right? Um, and thanks, everybody for, for being here and, uh, great to see some of, some of the folks that we haven't seen in a long time. Uh, so thanks very much for coming. And it looks like, yes, we will continue this conversation. Uh, if you would like the recording, just again, reach out to us and we can send you the recording, um, as well. So everybody, um, be safe, be well, keep these conversations going. You know, uh, reach out to us if you need anything and, uh, you know, thank you so much for being here and, uh, we'll see you again real soon.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Peter.